What you're remembering, Mark, is to do with the deed that the school district has about that property that it's supposed to be used for recreation. And that's the last I heard about it.
Yeah, but, okay, yeah, I mean, we have so much, we do really need things.
I don't know who's chair in the meeting exactly, but are we going to, I thought we got some good feedback from the county planning board that had issues that we should look at?
Yeah, well, we could get back to that, although most of, yeah, but why don't we do the three really difficult issues? So, I did read the county one, where I think it's fair we can do it with rats.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't wait.
Yeah, right, it was awful. And I think most of the answers definitely.
They give her the dead wood.
You get a free one.
Lucas worked for me.
Most of it doesn't mean that there has to be any changes in our documents, it's some implementation stuff that we thought would help. Okay, so the three, the three issues, they're a little meatier. Are the Broadway rezoning, and there's only one problem, permitting the medical uses. The other one is short-term rentals, and the third is using the store comes for that. So I would say, Brian, you talked about the request that the Broadway zoning also include medical uses or not explicitly.
No. I think that, I think we'll, I'll speak for myself, but my understanding is that looking to limit medical uses to heavy traffic, heavy traffic as a result, something like urgent care where it's constantly turning over, not a small acupuncturist or not even a therapist that has like an hour, one patient an hour or something like that. Like, I think it's more the traffic impact than actual medical uses.
Well, it is, but how do you define that?
Then I think also the size of that property then could allow a number of medical offices in there that would generate constant traffic, something like a WestMed where you have, now you have cardiologists, you have a GP, you have people coming and going all day. I think, I thought that's what we were opposed to.
Right, and I think to the size of it, you know, again, what they said is, like, right now, there's a property just in the north, has an acupuncturist in one of the offices. How many people, I mean, how much traffic? If they had, you know, eight hundred square foot, because they're hoping to rent it out, you know, it's not gonna be a full floor, even, it's gonna be like small little pieces. So if you have a psychotherapist in a six-hundred-square-foot office, it's not gonna generate that.
Right.
But I think that if you rented out the entire building as a WestMed, right now you've got to have the traffic. Exactly, and I think that that's how you parse that. I mean, it's separate.
But even if you don't rent it as a WestMed, if you rent it out to Dr. Someone-Some, who's an obstetrician, and Dr. Someone-Some.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Why? It doesn't need to be a WestMed. Medical offices see a lot more people than one in our.
A professional building, a professional medical building.
You're gonna have constant traffic.
The standard, I think the standard seems to be like.
I think, where you're talking about what Lino was saying, yeah, back offices are fine, because that's, that's not really a medical office, that's really just another business office.
That's a military office.
And the research.
We called it.
And researchers.
No, it wouldn't.
Just be a researcher's presence.
And researchers, we had indicated that researchers are okay. Doesn't matter if the researchers, now that this research in development, it can be medical.
And also the list of specialty, physician surgeons, that is, well, you have surgery, chiropractors, endocrinologists, to name but a few specialized areas.
See, but I think that's getting at the WestMed idea, that's getting at a medical, a medical office building.
Right, with many, with many kinds of special races going to generate.
And I do think that it's different if it's the entire building, or if it's one type, if one outbuilding has a, you know.
But I think that's where you gotta be careful of mine, because if you allow one office, how do you not allow the entire building to be that, those types of offices?
So what you're doing is, you're allowing, you're allowing that use, and, and once you allow that use, if somebody comes before the whatever board they've gotta come before, they do, or, or add, and, 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 you know, let's say, hey, no, we already have too many doctors in there, well, it's a permitted use, too bad, you can't do that.
You can't put a limit on it, like we, like we did, like for, didn't we do that for accessory houses, accessory apartments, we said there, which one was it, we put a limit on?
Only the village, yeah, fifty, yeah.
Yeah, you could do someone language like that, but that'd just be too strenuous for the zoning, like this.
I've never seen that, I'm not.
Because, I mean, I understand there, if, if, you know, again, the property that actually is having it now, so it may have been grandfathered in, but that, the one tiny acupuncturist there is, basically, that'd be, that would be nothing.
Are they, are they in the white building?
They're in the, no, they're the building next to, yeah, the building north of it. Whatever that is, one oh six.
Yeah, I, yeah, I see Brian's point, you know, a few is not a problem, but if it can't be written that way, then, but if it could be written that way, then it really limits, you know, in the whole facility.
Could you say, could you, could you, could we say, could you put a percentage in there, that no more than X percent could be rented out as medical offices?
I haven't seen it, but I don't see why you could.
Right, but the other way around, could you say that unaffiliated, abandon the language, but unaffiliated practitioners, you know, are, can be rented to you, but?
No, because honestly, practitioners.
You can have a hundred percent unaffiliated, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I know lots, see a lot more than that. I know he's pretty generous with that.
Yeah, he hasn't rushed, has he?
What do you want to say, Mr. Jay?
I, I.
No, I have to.
You know what would be the problem, though, is how do you, how would you monitor that, because it's, I.
You must.
Once the building, no, well, yeah, well, once the building's there, I mean, unless you, I don't think you would make every office, and he has to come in, be there by special permit, or they'd never be able to rent the office, generally, you allow.
The office, the room, the space, yeah.
Right, and then, and so it's not gonna come, it's not gonna come before the village unless, you know, unless, and let's say, he's a company, all of a sudden, there's all this traffic, so when he goes in and he does an inspection, and he sees that they're renting out forty percent of it, the doctors, what are you gonna do, those people have rhesus.
Why can't you have a special permit, if it's a medical, medically related activity?
You mean, so it can be monitored?
But how do you find it, then, this, personally, comes in there, I mean, unless Ed goes out there and sees it, you may not know that it's going on.
No, it has to be an exception, because I think, I think that's what, not, not necessarily a special use.
You said a special exception, but.
So say it would be allowed by, by special permit.
You gotta, you know, as you're considering for other things, you have to have somebody come in, present their application, say, the type of activity that they're planning, the type of hours they're looking at, and it's not automatic, it's got to be by review.
And the conditions could be the limiting factor.
And if too many offices are already there, or the third comes in, we could.
That's the condition.
But it does, it's not unreasonable to.
I haven't seen it either.
Create a mixed-use building to limit the types and concentrations of uses.
Well, we could, we could even look at some of the zoning, like Tarrytown has that medical building right on Route nine, that's all medical, we could say, what zone is that in? Is that just in an office zone, or do they have a special zone for that?
Where on, on.
I think it's two hundred north Broadway.
Yeah, I think, well, I think they have commercial zoning there, because there's law offices too.
Well, then, the other thing is, what is urgent care zoned on one nineteen? Now, that's, that's within an office complex, and it's partially, it's mainly offices, but then you also have urgent care in there, so, so we can go take a look at the Tarrytown zoning ordinance, see what it is that they don't, those uses.
Is there a way to capture what the sentiment is and put that in the plan? We're not gonna solve the problem tonight.
No, but I feel like maybe needs to get discussed a little bit.
Yeah, maybe we can almost make it a little bit weaker, like, medical offices would be, because again, we're not writing the law now, you know.
Right, right.
Medical offices would be considered by special permit, assuming the traffic impacts were marginal or semi-minimal, but up to a certain percentage, or, you know. I mean, there's no sense having special permit if you're not gonna limit it.
Right.
Well, suppose you guys.
We have two boys. But you have parking too, because usually, a higher, a higher, a higher need for a medical office than regular offices and, and traffic.
But, but, Rick, that's a good question, I mean, and also, you were partly earlier discussing whether you wanna put a limit on how many of the offices could be, or what percentage of it could be medical.
I'm not sure percentage, mentioning a percentage is a good idea, because then you're suggesting that anything up to that percentage is okay, and, and depending on what kind of medical activity is being proposed, it may be that that should not be permitted at all, depending on what the circumstances are.
Yeah, see, the problem with, and everybody should understand, I think probably most of you do, but a special permit use is a permitted use, permitted use, if it meets the requirements. So what are your requirements? Requirements be that there be enough parking, well, any use there has to have enough parking, it has to meet the parking requirements, so what would be your conditions?
Traffic generation. Traffic generation. Parking the other big issue.
It's traffic, well, at this point.
Well, you might, there's some way we can leave it open, that it's something to be considered, depending upon the impacts, the traffic and parking impacts, that need to be further analyzed before you, before we say yes.
But I think we're saying more than that, I think the, what everybody started with is we don't want WestMed there, you know, so it's not just traffic and parking, it's the nature of the practice, that we're all quite happy with Freudian psychoanalysts who take an entire hour with one patient who's lying there quietly, and, but we're very unhappy with, with WestMed.
No medical waste creation.
I'm sorry?
I said, no medical waste creation.
Right, you got that. So it's, I think it's also conceptual, like, we're happy with acupuncturists, we're not so happy with surgeons, we're, I think we need to think this through, it's not just traffic and parking, and it's certainly not percentage, you're right.
Maybe we're just definitely not coming up with a percentage tonight, that's for sure.
I think it might be worth looking at what, what's the zoning, though?
I thought just a kind of time, it gives you the option.
Do whatever you want, then it'll bill.
So that comes up, because of the flexibility, that sounded good to me, if you remember what you said.
I'm sorry?
I thought the language you spoke two minutes ago was, I'm like, holy cross, man, you remember two minutes ago.
Remember what I just said, that's the problem.
But, I, I, it sounds like there's, in general, the agreement to look at this as a possibility, given those kinds of constraints that have been, have been brought up. But not just, not just say no.
It needs some further analysis.
If it was a special permit, you would have to still have some kind of cutoff that would trigger in the review process, where you could say, not arbitrarily, say enough is enough, there's gotta be a criteria.
And, and you really do have to detail the criteria, because I'm assuming you don't want the board of trustees issuing it, so if it's the, if it's the planning board that issues the special permit, they can only deny it if those criteria are met, they can't let go beyond, like, if it comes before the board of trustees, because they just aren't gonna be, you could, you could, you can have more reasons than what's laid out in the code. But, okay, I, I think I have enough sense, other senses that I could look around here.
Can I just ask the two, the two planners that are at the table? How, how fine are the accepted traffic generation measures in terms of, how specific do they get when you talk about the types?
Like order of traffic study. Well, you could go look, you could go look in the Institute of Traffic Engineering, you look at their handbook, they analyze, well, they analyze all different types of uses, and see what, what kind of traffic is generated based on their research.
Right.
You could do that, but then again, you could also look at zoning ordinances in the area and see how they're handling these similar issues.
No, no, I wasn't, I, this was my own information, just in thinking about solving the problem, but I was wondering just how, how detailed do you get? Do you know how much a general practice generates versus a dentist's office versus an ophthalmologist?
That's the IT, that's the IT, you go to the IT and you can, I don't know if they break it down.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Maybe a medical office, but a medical office, right, but whether it's like dentist or chiropractor.
And you know what, it also varies really tremendously from doctor to doctor, I mean, some just turn around now.
They can turn them out, right?
And others are like, really, they give them a quarter hour.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
They're sitting there for two and a half.
All right, I think I have, I have enough of an idea that we can.
Do we also wanna deal with their, their comment about an inconsistency in, in the language that we have, I'm not sure I agree with.
I know, he's right. Okay. And that is the main point of that. Yeah, and then, okay, then the, the next item to discuss are, are short-term rentals. I don't know, my general sense of it was, that it wasn't the short-term rentals that people had an issue with, when they had a, everybody's problem with B and B is the fact that certain people are using, I mean, with Airbnb was that certain people are using Airbnb.
Let's say that's their bigger issue anyway, I think some, some people did have a problem with it, used it, used it as a short-term rental, but I think the bigger one was the party.
That's some of the residential districts.
Yeah, so anyway, so I think, but anyway, yes.
My, my, commercial, yeah, I almost break those things into two different, completely distinct things, and.
Which two things?
Yeah, let's just talk about the short-term rentals.
Short-term rental, not talking about just opening the door to having giant parties, this is traditional usage as, you know, you wanna come and stay, and I think, I think we should also add a limit to the amount of people that can stay, I don't care how big the house is, because, you know, twenty-six people, if you, you know, it's just too much, I mean, you have to, you can't have more than X.
But how is that enforceable, I mean, are you going to have people now responsible to monitor the listings, to say?
See, I think the issue is that you can't have people monitor issues, because there's new ones popping up all the time, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So I think if you make it incumbent on someone to have to get a permit to do it, and that it goes along with the things of making sure they have egress, and, you know, all those scope detectors, whatever, all the building department issues, it's gotta have somewhat of a police, so if someone says, you know what, you can only do it X amount of nights, like, you know, I, I know they have more than that, and it does have to be investigated, like, I don't think you're gonna have to, you know, I don't think you could have someone in the building department monitoring every possible rental website, but I think without doing anything, you're gonna have the same issue, like, if you say, okay, we're gonna start monitoring everything, we're gonna, we're gonna say there's no short-term rentals, and we're gonna start monitoring Airbnb and HomeAway and whatever the other ones are, that's, that's, that's not, we have two people or one and a half people in our building department, you can't do that. So I think that, I think you have to regulate it somehow, and then it's gonna be somewhat, as long as you're not bad actors, you're not, probably not gonna get caught, you know, and if they do, and they don't have the permit, you know, then, then they get, they get fined. I mean, it's, in some ways, it's, I think it's, I think the practical stance, but I think it's very hard to eliminate it altogether.
But, 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 but. Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna read the requirements that we recommend, you know, we said, these are some of.
We have a lot of them, yeah.
Yeah, these were some of the requirements, we, let me ask one of, search and rentals, registration of the property being rented.
Page you want?
Page twenty-nine. A limit on the number of properties that might be registered at any one time, we have to find neighborhood, demonstration of compliance with smoke and local building fire and other safety requirements, proof of insurance covering the rental, adequate off-street parking, payment of a fee to the village officer administrated, cost owner occupancy of the property, although not necessarily during the time it's being rented, if the owner's not staying at the property, local contact person must be identified. I don't know if you wanna, would wanna add anything else to that? Somebody said something about a limit on the number of people that could be rented out.
I think that that.
You talked about that.
I think parking, yeah, I think parking obviously does somewhat limit that, but I think maybe an overall cap on the, and maybe we don't know what that is tonight, I don't know if six is good and eight's bad, but, you know, I think a limit on the number of people, regardless of the home size, you know, that you could have.
Yeah, but it gets tricky, you know, if it's a family, and there's patients, I can easily, I can easily see it going to like ten people with your three kids.
But maybe it's, but maybe it's ten, maybe it's not twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know.
Forty, seventy, or, you know, I think.
Yeah, but you sort of don't wanna say ten, because you don't want somebody being renting out a bunch of bedrooms in their house by yourself, you wanna go there, I have a problem with the numbers, I mean, these are quite a list of things, is, do these are inadequate? Do we think these are, you do?
Well, I, I don't think it's necessarily inadequate, I just think it leads to more issues if you say, you know what, I have a four-bedroom house, or I have a five-bedroom house, so I'm gonna rent it too, I can have four people per bedroom, I can have twenty people, I can put them, park them on my lawn, and now I have parking, you know, like, it's, I think it's somewhat, if you, I don't know, I think that it has to be an upper limit.
I don't, when we're putting in the requirement of registration of property, yeah, makes the applicant put in the proposed maximum number of people.
Well, isn't there a fire code requirement anyways, if there's so many rooms and so much public space, you know, like dining room, there's gonna be a limit to the occupancy, right?
We don't, we don't really know, I mean, this is uncharted territory.
This is not hotel, this is, this is, there must be some kind of.
No, Bruce's point is really good, if you ask what's the proposed maximum number of people, you kind of need to know that, so you know whether there's adequate parking, and also, so if it's around twenty, you're not gonna give them the permit.
And then, the number of people the property can, the property handle.
So there's not a residential code requirement that puts a limit on, on occupancy?
You have two sets of triplets, what do you?
One family.
Family. I mean, we did a whole analysis of what is a family a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we changed the law.
Yeah, right, right.
You define family.
I mean, you're forced to do, no, I mean.
I mean, I think that that's probably a realistic way to do it is, I think that's a good way to do it.
So, I think the number of people is almost.
Give it a one.
Yes, right, before you look at those statistics, we'll do it.
Take it down, necessarily relate to the number.
No, but I think, my point is that the question then would lead you, you kind of need to know that, anyway, to determine whether there's enough parking, I mean, you may not have the parking, but you say, no, the people we have are all coming in from the, from the train or something like that.
Right, but that's not a, so.
We haven't decided.
If it's just parking, they're really quite true.
Yeah, but no, we also didn't decide on the number of parking spaces, it says adequate off-street parking, which may vary, it may, might not be, you know, the same as.
You mean something different, that twenty people was not acceptable period, that's a high turnover for a small neighborhood, right?
Right.
You could have twenty people in that house.
Three bedrooms for a park has twenty people that come up on the train, it's probably gonna, it's probably gonna cause more issues, you know, than if they had eight people there, you know, it's just noise and whatever.
You know what, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of legislation.
I have problems with this a lot.
A lot of legislation on, on, on Airbnbs that I can look through, and I'm sure other people have addressed this thing, but, but I know, but I think we can just add to this that some limit on the number of people, you know, and then, and then deal with the specifics later.
And just in context, I, part of the reason we decided to consider this to begin with is because we felt would give us more control ultimately than not controlling it at all, we know it's happening, witness some of the.
Well, but how does this control, look, let's, let me cut to the chisel, I mean, the real issue here is the Dolan House, because that's what most of these comments center around at this point, that I see, how is this, how is what we are proposing here addressing that issue? I don't see that it is, because what I see the Dolan House is doing is it's a commercial enterprise in a residential area, and I think that is bad precedent, and I'm totally opposed to it, and I'm going on record right now, I've never been supportive of that, I think that's a bad idea, because I think you start, you start, you, you, you start degrading the quality of the residential neighborhoods, and, and those people who came down to the Croft Street, the Sykes, I feel for them, more than I feel for Mr. Dolan, if you can't afford to live in that house, then sell the house and go live someplace that you can afford. If you want to, if you want to, if you own a house that is on the national register, and you wanna have a fundraiser, you, the owner, wanna have a fundraiser at that house, that's one thing, but if you wanna rent it out to somebody who wants to have a shower, a wedding, a shower, or, 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 like that, I am totally opposed to it.
Yeah, but, yeah, on the Airbnb, we specifically, we specifically said that it's only for lodging, camping use for parties, right?
Okay.
That would, that would be on the, that would be the short-term rental.
So, so are we saying that what is going on at the Dolan House is not, is not acceptable and has to be addressed?
Yeah, no, that would, no, that's, that's the next issue, although, it raises an interesting point, though, if you have a, to Brian's point, if you have a house that big, and they, as we know, it could accommodate twenty-six in beds, do you get to rent it out?
To twenty-six people, or, you know what, twenty-six people in the bedrooms, we can also get eight downstairs and two in the basement, like, that's what I'm saying, like, you almost come up with a quasi-party house, and that's, you know, maybe it's a maximum of that.
Well, no, but you come up with this a hotel.
Yes, that's what.
Exactly, right, which is very different than someone on, you know, Spurrow Park, that every year goes to Italy for two weeks, and they say, you know what, I wanna offset some of that cost and have family stay here from the city for two weeks, that no one even knows they're there.
So maybe that, maybe that gets addressed by the limit on the number.
That's what I'm saying, like, that's what.
The number of times or the number of people?
No, the, the, the number of people.
And that we're not saying that you can have as many people as your number of bedrooms will accommodate, that's not the, that's not the measure, you know, so.
Let me, let me look, I, I, let me look to, see if I can find something, but I think we could describe what we want, is some sort of women, maximum number of people that should be there.
Having twenty-six or forty people at a house is gonna have a lot more traffic, it's gonna have the, the, much more noise, if you have, you know, a family of five, say, staying in a regular house, it should not be much different than when the family's there.
Right.
But when, Mr. Dolan does not have twenty-six people living in his house all the time, you know, so it's, that's the difference.
So, so Pat, were you against this example of like the short-term rental in Spurrow Park, that would be like, we're talking about here, in this part?
This one also.
Okay.
I'm against that, because I've experienced it across the street from me, somebody comes in with a Florida license, but living there for a week or two, say, what the hell is going on here, guy's parking on the wrong side of the street all the time, doesn't know what the hell's going, who are you? I don't want that in my neighborhood, and I, and I agree, I didn't move to Irvington to, to want to experience that, I mean, New York City, I don't know if they've changed it, they do not allow, and whether they can even enforce it, rentals less than thirty days, okay, so they're trying, they're trying to get at it in some way, that's New York City.
Although their specific issue was that Airbnb was putting hotels out of business, because people were staying.
Well, yeah, but, 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 but it also goes into places like Queens and Brooklyn, where you have residential areas, and you have people coming in there, and who are they, you know, there's no change in there.
No, I know you could do it, because my, you can still rent for short periods in New York.
You can get away with it, I'm sure you can.
You can, I guess you must have changed.
Well, the law was that you couldn't rent for less than thirty days.
So there are, there are so many municipalities, and I think we've looked at some of them, that have Airbnb, different regulations, and this short-term rental thing is what we're talking about here, the other one is a different one, but, I mean, as far as this one goes, I.
I, I think, I think it's more, I think it's very hard to simply eliminate it, I think in your case where that person, you know, was, you know, throwing trash, whatever, I think.
Or just even the fact that.
There's someone different.
It's all, all the inside-the-street parking, you're parking on the wrong side of the street, and now you're creating the problem that if I wanna park on, or, my people come and wanna park on the right side of the street, and now the fire truck can't get up the street because you've parked on the wrong side all day, and you don't know about it.
Why isn't this a, an issue of enforcement, I mean, why isn't, because, you know, it's just not the party has, and enforcement issues, it sounds like we have to be able to enforce the, this limited Airbnb as well, and if part of the problem is parking, then there has to be, you know, some expenditure or effort to be sure that complaints are addressed directly.
Well, we say in here that there has to be, if the person is not living in the house, because sometimes you're gonna have the person still living in their own house and renting out bedrooms, but if the person's not there, there has to be a local contact, so you're got with larger places on the wrong side of the street, you're trying to have visitors come, you call the police or whoever who has the list of the contact person who says, who would be responsible for being able to get hold of the renter.
So, how long, how much time do they have to respond and rectify the situation?
It's really down a little fine.
No, but, no, not really, because I think what we heard, especially in terms of Arslay Park, was the sheer inability or unwillingness of the police to enforce the law that's on books right now, so if we can't conceive of ways of having reasonable enforcement, even on simple situations, I don't know what we're doing.
Well, I think we're mixing up two things, though, and it's very easy to do, there's the short-term.
No, I'm talking about enforcement, period, for either situation.
There's enforcement of things like parking on the wrong side of the street, there's enforcement of things like excessive noise, and there's enforcement of you shouldn't be there in the first place. They're kind of different.
Well, I don't know.
The lawyers, then why aren't they being, can I, 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 why are these people in, in Arslay Park saying they're not being enforced? Why aren't they being enforced? I don't understand that. If there are laws on the books, why aren't, aren't the local police enforcing that?
See, it doesn't bode well for.
That doesn't look good.
For.
If you're gonna create more regulation and the cops couldn't enforce the regulations that they're now, how are they gonna enforce the new regulations?
Well, I do think we have to actually beef up some of the regulations so it's easier. So that's, to me, it's.
Where the law is, where our.
That, exactly, because I think that's the problem, was creating the case, we had to get a prosecutor, it wasn't just like, he had a party, it's against the law, here's a $10,000 fine. It was much harder than that, because it was, okay, there was a party, Ed comes and checks it out, but there's a, you know, it was, it was all like after the fact. Voice, noise violations you can do, but it's like a, you know, $20 fine, I don't even know what it is, but it's, you know, it's, it's slap with the wrist at best.
Can't they shut them down?
They can shut them down.
Okay, so let's switch to the party houses, I think.
Oh, we've solved, we've solved his Airbnb problem.
Well, the pants always been in the middle.
Most of what he just said. Yeah, I agree, yeah, most of what he's said.
And I think that we should have fines that are significant for any kind of violations of the permits, I mean, they shouldn't just be like $100 fines, there should be fines that someone's gonna think twice about whether or not they're gonna actually.
I agree as well.
That's gonna be revoked as well.
They also have a fine for operating without the permit that is significant, you just can't have like.
Or if they have a violation, then you require a bond before they do it again, payable to the village.
Well, yeah, I like that too.
So that's the only way, we know it's happening, this is the only way we're gonna control it. We might all agree in the best of all possible worlds, we'd all just live in our happy little houses, and, you know, the only people we'd be staying there is our invited guests who are relatives according to the expanded definition of family. But we know that that's not, that people are renting out their houses, either part of their house while they're there, or their whole house when they were in Italy, or whatever. So, you know, I agree, there should be really clear expectations, there should be significant penalty and an ability to revoke a permit. This is, this seems, seems to me to be one of the only ways we're going to get any kind of control of this practice, which is pretty ubiquitous.
That's what the last sentence says.
I, I agree, that's well said.
Which practice? The Airbnb, not?
Not the parties.
We're not commercializing.
We're not there yet.
And we can, it's easy to mix them up because it's the same bed after who does both, but if we keep it just two, and we had, have had enough people, enough meetings where people have said, look, it means a lot to me to be able to do this. I have a two-family house, I don't want to sell it, you know, my kids come and visit with some frequency, but it would be really nice if I could generate some income, and I'm always here.
And I also think it's very common, and there aren't usually issues.
Right.
You know, I, I don't think there's as many issues, there's definitely not as many issues as the using it as a banquet hall.
The close, the closer the houses get to each other, the more there is of an issue. The farther they are apart from each other, the less there is.
The last time I looked at it, there were over 30 listings on just Airbnb alone in Irvington. And I, I don't think, other than one house, which really used it as a party, especially, that's not true, there was two houses as party spaces.
Legend of.
That was a catering hall.
Then when that was shut down.
Yep, and then, and then Dolan House. Those were the two that I remember that were on Airbnb that I've ever gotten complaints about, maybe there are others, but I don't remember. So I think most of them are, you know.
And I don't know anyone who knows.
Or someone that, you know, would know, you know, and I think that that's.
I mean, speaking another language.
Right.
That's not coherent.
So, you know, I think that that's, and I, and I think it's really hard is to say, you know, you can't do it, because I think it's, I agree, I mean, I think it'd be something perfectly, that we have to almost get ahead of it, because we can't keep up with it.
And we're also then in a defensive position, like, this is my house. If I want to, you know, generate some income from, from it by having people, I vet carefully and I'm willing to pay, you fill out your form and register, and give you contact people and get the insurance.
Airbnb does that as well.
I'm sorry.
Yes, they made you do it.
What you're telling me is, you're now, at what point does a residential facility become a commercial facility? That's what you're saying, it's, it's one thing for me to rent out a house to somebody, give them a year lease, and rent, rent the house out, something different for me to rent it out for a week by week by week by week.
No, I think it's limiting the number of.
That's usually only week a year in August. That's why you limit the number of people at any time.
Look at the list.
And number of times during the year.
Yes. We had a limit on the number of properties, we didn't talk about.
Well, that was the original recommendation.
Yes, I'm gonna talk about, but I don't think there was a limit on the number of we should rent it out.
We didn't know if there was a way to enforce that.
Well, somebody's.
It's a track of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, Mark.
Okay.
Are you paying the job?
No.
Where you want to pay me?
Mark, again, it's, it's another, it's another one of those, it gets enforced by complaint. So then if, you know, if, if Pat, if Pat sees a problem in his neighborhood and see, constantly seeing George, or place other, maybe the grandmother's from George.
It's gotta be careful.
Yeah, then you can, then you can look into it. But I don't know, we hadn't, we had touched on it, but that was never one of the recommendations.
Put any consideration in a limited number of days, a number of nights of rentals.
I mean, again, I did see that that's, you know.
You want that?
I want to rent it to somewhere for three months, because I'm going to Tuscany for three months, does that ring?
Uh, I hope you hope.
I wish, but, uh, you know, so does that break the limit?
And especially in summertime, when somebody else wants to come, you know, and it's an easy way, affordable to stay in this part of the country and explore the city and.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's a good way to do it, especially.
And house swapping is different, right? But it's the same issues you're coming up with. I'm gonna go to Tuscany and they're gonna come to Irvington, I'm not, they're not paying me, but.
They, they're pretty ready to go to Tuscany. It's, it's highly unlikely that the person coming from Tuscany is gonna come into Irvington and throw wild parties in that house.
So that's, we.
That is a complete supposition.
But it's, but it's. It's, Italians are not very welcome. It's a lot of talk, but.
Do you want, do you want a limit on the number of days a place can be rented out?
It's really considerate, you know, when we're.
But what's, what is, what is this, you know?
Plenty of time to decide that more.
No, I'd be saying that if, if, I think last time, it fell across the, the, the rocks agreed, because we couldn't, didn't come up with it.
Well, six months to, I mean, because there's different situations, you described it, no, but there was a woman who came in, she, she really made a really good point, she has a two-bedroom, and this is actually what prompted our thinking about this, she has a two-family house in the village, and one of her apartments, her kids used to live in, but the kid moved out, and, and she's a, she works in family court, and she'll often get hu- husband, families that just split, couples that just split, and the guy needs a place to live. So she would like to make that avail, she could rent it out, but only for certain periods, and then, so when her son's home, her son could stay there for a month, so she's got the thing available, but when her son's not there, she could rent it out to somebody else. There would seem, there would be a situation where it would seem to be harmless to be many times, you know, whatever. So it depends on the situation.
Why is it harmless? Yeah, I was gonna say, it may not be harmless to the next-door neighbor, you know.
Well, because it's probably the same person. Yeah, but it might be that, you know, she's renting to somebody for three months, and then somebody different for three months.
A sequence of divorced people or people going through a divorce, you think that's gonna be out of the ordinary here? I don't, I don't see that.
I mean, if you got a two-family house, you couldn't rent the house out for a, one of those apartments out for a year?
But she doesn't want to.
Did she ever get out?
No, 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 because she wants it available for her family, let's say, at the holiday. I'm not talking about her in particular, but it's, it's a reasonable situation, I don't know. I'm just.
It's almost like, why do we have to, again, somebody else raised that in one of the legislative centers, why do we have to accommodate the minority in this? I mean, what, isn't there the majority that should be ruling here? I mean, I, what, we didn't come to live in Irvington to have a commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood. I came here because I wanted a residential neighborhood. If I wanted a commercial neighborhood, I'd go live in a commercial area.
But I think, again, I don't know that you can call Airbnb in the strictest sense a commercial enterprise. I mean, I think it's, it does help people meet mortgage and stuff like that, but it's not like, it is, to me, it's different than a party house, where you got, you know, you got caterers, you've got, you know, event planners and all that, and a band, that to me is like over the top. That's different than just saying, I understand, I see that distinction, but you also have, you could have a, a continuous chain of different people coming into the neighborhood.
Well, that's why we would say there's a, a cap on how many there can be. A cap perhaps by neighborhood or area might make a lot of sense. And, um, you know, and regulation of how frequently a person can do that and what lengths of time. But it does, it's, it's hard to just figure, figure that out when there are so many different situations that might be, make sense in one, you know, six months in one situation might make perfect sense, where six months in another would not.
I think if you want to do it, you gotta be very careful and really make it strict, and if, and, and you have to, somebody's gotta oversee this, and then you gotta reassess it as you go along and see if this is working out or not.
Oh, of course.
And you're ready to pull back on it if need be. But it's, I'm just, I'm not crazy about it. I don't want to, non-commer- commercial uses in a residential neighborhood. I'm a, I'm a traditionalist when it comes to planning and separation of uses. You know, certain mixed, in certain areas around the train station, you want to have mixed uses, that's one thing. But when you get into residential neighborhoods, they should be residential, they shouldn't be commercial enterprise.
But again, if somebody's just renting it as a place to, you know, like, you can use the kitchen and here's the bedroom, and you rent it out for a week like that, that's, to me, that's, you know, the, the, the kind of the low-end Airbnb, right? Not, not.
A boarding house.
Is it?
You just define, you just describe like a boarding house.
Which is permitting.
It's permitting, yeah, which I'm crazy about either. Boarding.
So, but it's really, it's, so we, our code does permit borders.
Yes.
So where, you know, how, how wildly different is that from what we're describing here?
Well, fortunately, the, the borders on my block have been there a while. But again, the borders, I don't even see the borders really contributing to the quality of Irvington. They're there, but they're gone. Their students, or their workers, or something, they're there for a while and then they're gone. What are they contributing to the quality of my neighborhood? As opposed to somebody who's there and is living there for a long period of time?
But the people that live in there a long period of time, they don't contribute.
But I know who they are.
There's, I, I know, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, Pat, and I, I'm, I'm listening, but I, I don't, I don't see it as a disruption of the neighborhood the way you do, I think the diversity is.
Are you experiencing it?
Well, I, I, I haven't, I, I don't know, I mean, there may have been an Airbnb on my block and I don't even know it, I guess I could look it up.
But you have borders, you have students.
And I've had students, yeah, I've had students from E F school. Yeah, it's been, I think it's added to the neighborhood tremendously. So I'm, I'm thinking, I know we've discussed this at certain points, and I'm, I'm, I still feel that what we have here makes sense, and I don't know where everybody else is.
I guess we should point and see whether we want to move on.
I, I hear what you say, but I, I, I also remember the discussion so much about people struggling to pay the taxes and stay here, and this is, this was one of the considerations that we had to make it viable to live here.
Right, that's a key point of why we're trying to.
That was one of the big motivators, so I, I, you know, I know there's many sides to it, but I'm, I'm still.
But also, had we got to the point where this was a recommendation from the subcommittee dealing with this issue?
Well, it doesn't matter, but it was also a recommendation of the whole compromise grant committee, so that's where we are now. So, so I get, I.
I mean, I, I think I wouldn't mind adding a consideration of a potential cap. I don't know, I don't know what that is today.
Okay.
But I would, I would like to, as we look at it and look at other Airbnb laws, I'd, I'd be happy to.
I don't want to put that into something.
Yeah, we don't have to put, we don't have to put the cap in here, but just say that we, you know.
We could consider a cap on the number of days.
Or, or individual rentals, I mean, there's different units of measure.
That was one of the.
No, the cap is on how many, how many.
Oh, okay, right. Was that what it was, we're in the village?
Remember, you need a permit for it.
We did.
We did.
But we never.
Yeah.
But at least you know that there's. Never to be more than one on your block, or one in the surrounding ten blocks, maybe, I mean, it's, it's limited by neighborhood.
It's gonna be marked with a blue sign in the front.
Well, you.
No Tuscan.
But you know, I, I, let me just, 40 years ago, I wrote a, an article for the county planning department about zoning for a new kind of family, which was the, the doing away with institutions in New York State because of what happened at Willowbrook and Araldo Rivera. And we, and what we came up with was a guideline, maybe you, you didn't want to create a de facto institutional area in a, in a municipality by allowing group homes to all come into one area. So we started setting up, we thought there, there should be some sort of distance requirement. Eventually that got shut down in the courts. So now you can't, you can't restrict, you can't not allow group home in neighborhoods. So you just gotta be careful of the same thing here.
There's too many, if you make it showing that there's too many.
That's your only alternative, I think.
Yeah, right, otherwise, absolutely, we know, we know.
Okay, all right, let's, let's move on to really, I don't know, the hardest issue, I think, and.
We're not going back to goats, right?
No, we're good with these.
The next conference supply is a gold.
Um, okay, just using, using large properties for.
That's for you.
Well, all the, all the parts, there's events and other things.
Yeah, you have that, like, right, short.
What page is that?
Page 666. Page 666.
Yeah.
Here, 43.
That's the hot least.
I mean, before, we'll sleep before leaving.
I think that, I mean, not to sound like Pat, but.
I forget.
I have no idea why, I like him. But not to sound like Pat, uh, you know, I, I think that the componderance of the letters we've got in just says that this isn't something we should be considering. But I looked at this as kind of the greater good of Irvington, I think there's a very limited number of people or, or homes that are gonna benefit from it. The one that has been benefiting from it, um, has kind of shown that we may, maybe we can't trust them to do these types of things, and I think we heard loud and clear from his direct neighbors that this isn't something, I, something I don't, I don't think we should be considering.
The letter we got today said he's, that property is rented.
been so many complaints to this point about what it does? It doesn't make any sense.
Part, I'm sorry, didn't you?
It's not true. I think, in my opinion, it was gonna go the other way and put in a law that makes it very clear and very easy to.
I think so, that, I think that's the problem, is let's get it enforceable first and then figure out what the exceptions are. Because I'd like to see Joe Lombardi be able to have events at his, at his house.
Well, not, no, don't personalize it, not him. The property has got different aspects that lends itself to something probably better than the other person.
Well, I ask, I'm sorry, I personalize it because I support him as a more mature and.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe that'll come through in the press. This is not about any one individual.
You're right. I'm just saying.
On the national register also, I mean, you can, you can make a case.
And we visit on the register.
I, I don't know.
But, but again, I, I go back to the point, it's one thing for the owner of the property to say, I'm gonna hold a fundraiser, I'm gonna be there once or twice a year, we're gonna have a fundraiser to raise money for, to keep this going. But to renting out.
He did, he does it the right way, yeah. And you work for the historical side, I mean, again, it's.
Do we have a limited code that he's conforming to?
As you know, it's. His party.
What has he even done?
It's like he.
A fundraiser.
Yeah.
He is, but they're all for nonprofit. It's always been for nonprofit.
No, I understand. No, I, I didn't know what, I, I didn't know if that was pervasive.
Doesn't he have?
No.
The octagon house open, available for rental or, and or? I think I've seen it.
Yes, he said it listed.
Yeah, for like, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars for a weekend or something. I don't know if anyone's done it, but it's out there.
Oh, really?
To be rented.
But, but this particular situation is clearly in violation of the current zoning. And what options do we have that's stopping this problem that exists before we think of it?
You mean the door problem?
Yeah.
I, I think, how do we fix the problem now and then figure out moving forward? Because if we just move forward fixing the problem now, we're just opening up major cans of worms.
It just seems to me that this, this material that was provided to us from Airbnb, which shows it, how many days? You have the number, how many days?
Seventy-one. Seventy-one. Well, that's what the letter says. They had a, a calendar that made it look like seventy-one, and they had a figure of sixty-five hundred dollars as a charge per day, and that's almost half a million dollars. And we're only halfway through the year. So, I, I'm sympathetic to the high tax argument, but that really falls apart when you look at the numbers.
No, but in this instance, just unfortunately.
Yeah. So, I mean, to me, we have a problem which is not being dealt with, and that's unacceptable. So, the only way to deal with this, or two ways, one would be to help it altogether with a, a law that has teeth and will cost whoever does it very significant sums of money, or to put in some sort of regulation, regulatory framework that says, basically, Irvington does not allow this. But if you come in with a general application and a specific application which demonstrates the following things, well, consider it. I mean, Pat, to me, has some attraction because assuming it's trying to be enforced, then it's a way to tamp down on this or eliminate it altogether, which I'd be okay with. I mean, if a house cannot demonstrate that it should be doing this, then it shouldn't do it. There's no right to do this.
No, there's not. There's a profit, you, right, but just, you know, you did the math, that there's, how can we possibly have a fine that is going to outweigh the profit that's being generated by this?
I think when you shut it down, the party, they're not gonna come back, you know, like that's, that, they're not gonna pay him either. So, that does, there's a fine and you don't get your money.
And then you get bad reviews on Airbnb.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, you get bad reviews.
I didn't hear, like, you just.
You pay the, you gotta pay that ticket ahead of time.
Yeah, but you, I mean, I would say one thing, if somebody said bad reviews on Airbnb, you can't. No, no, but you can't, you can't, you, I would say that you wouldn't let these places advertise on Airbnb. Because if you're saying the only Airbnb allowed in Irvington is for short-term rentals, you would have to structure it in some way, some way that that wouldn't, you know.
But I can say if I had a, if I was having a wedding for two hundred and fifty people at Rick's house, and, you know, right as the bride and groom arrive, the police come and say, no wedding. I'm gonna say, you know what, I want my forty-six hundred dollars back and I'm gonna sue you because you said you could do this and it's illegal.
Would you really, no, let's be practical about it, though. Would you really ruin the, I, I, would you really ruin the wedding? I mean.
I gotta tell you, I'd let the wedding go through the room and.
Exactly.
It'd also make the fun commensurate with the daily, uh.
Yeah, no, the fun, no, the fun, the fine is easy to deal with, but.
I gotta tell you, if it was one.
Human nature being human.
I gotta tell you, if it was one time Rick had a wedding.
Rest of all, the wedding party. I said, rest of all, just put up a barrier, start processing them, bring in some lessons.
But I ask you, like, if, if, if it was one time that Rick had a party at his house and he was for profit even, and he didn't know any better, say, Rick, you know, let this happen, we're gonna get fined, but you can't do it again. If he did, if, if we've already been through this and say, you can't do this, and then Rick said, well, you know what, I just booked seventy-one nights, I would shut down the wedding then, because, you know what, shame on the proprietor.
There's another problem with the idea, I'm sorry, addressing that about, you know, okay, so you let the event go on, but there's still sixty-five cars parked on two blocks or one block, there's people trespassing, and the noise is excessive, so you can't let it.
I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying, human nature being what it is.
Then we'd have to get some local cops to go and, and force regulations.
But then, no, it has to be made clear to the owner that we are not putting up with this anymore and the next event will be shut down. So, if you're looking a wedding, it ain't gonna happen.
Well, that's, that just says, everything we said is, in here, is what we said we wanted to do. But the neighbors don't believe us.
I know.
Because it's never been enforced, according to them.
I can't blame them.
I can't blame them.
And then I also say, what's the big benefit for Irvington overall for allowing?
Well, just allow, the whole thought was to allow the historic properties not to be sold and subdivided.
Right.
But that was the.
But maybe the cost of allowing, we have to look at it in the bigger picture, is it worth it because of the potential for abuse?
Well, we did allow them now to have, talking about allowing residential and museum use, uh, patrimony, which I think is another, yeah, oh, wait, it was making property survive, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And house tours and that kind of.
Much less impactful on the neighborhood.
And it also has something to do with the, with the historic significance of the property.
Exactly, so maybe we're not, they're on trial, maybe we're trying to permit something that shouldn't be done. It, it is, this is, more than anything, as Pat was saying, and I totally agree, you know, this is commercialization of residential district, so maybe it's just repugnant and that's it, period.
And, and I think if you limit it so much, you say, well, you can do it twice a year, just throwing out a number, you, that's not gonna help anybody and you still have the issues twice a year. You know what I mean? Like, it's not, it's almost like if you have to, you go all in and you gotta let them do it seventy-one times to base, to basically run a property.
It's illegal. It's commerc, you can't rent your place out for a wedding. That's a commercial use.
I'm, I'm completely comfortable with that, we just need a way for it to function.
Yeah, which is a different issue altogether. I think, you know, to me, it's, it's almost separating, like, forget including this is a, something I want to do.
Well, I think it saves the Airbnb a little bit because you can make a difference, an absolute difference, there's no commercial use of, of residentials in residential zone, and you can.
Other than.
Overhens that, which is, is that commercial use of grounds? Are we collecting tax on it?
I don't know, I don't say no.
Yeah, I'm gonna say no, too, so I don't know if that's a commercial use.
But we know what we need, that's the big thing.
Right, we know, it's different, it's different.
We're saying that.
It's lower impacts, other than.
Well, who's not happy with banning these kind of events and, because this was a historic property exception, right? This was it.
It was suggested by the proprietor of that property.
Yeah, but also, this, what it's for.
It was suggested by the proprietor of that property.
I.
He was on the committee.
But you all recommend.
Before anybody knew there were seventy-one.
And the extent of the violations with non-response, you know.
And I thought it was once or twice a year, I didn't, you know, once or twice a season even.
So, why would you take out the rest of the baseball?
That's what I was gonna say, why would we vote against it?
We adopted a local landmark law in the village a couple of months ago. With the idea that we were gonna allow the homes that would allow that designation some kind of advantages, which we never really specified.
Right. Well, museums is, is a potential.
Okay, we talked, maybe, maybe, you know, making some of them, you know, touch with special purpose multifamily or something like.
And tours, but where do we draw the line? So, when does a, when does an event, I mean, a tour is one thing, obviously, a fundraiser is one thing, like, for a nonprofit or something, but we have to have a clear line that says, you know, but you can't have wedding, or you can't have.
A rite, or, you know.
Whatever, yeah.
Well, it doesn't need to be a rite, because that's pretty clear, but wedding, bar mitzvahs, the, the, the problematic, um.
So, I have to say, we have to be clear, we want some of this stuff, we have to be clear how to.
Well, the, I mean, one of the things is that it's related to the historical nature of the building, so if you're giving a tour, if you're having a fundraiser for the Irvington Historical Society, if.
If you're having a masquerade party where everyone dresses up in period costumes, that's a party and fifty-five cars are gonna drive.
It's a fundraiser.
It's gonna be, yeah.
I mean, but to make.
There's fundraisers, there's fundraisers.
But we could still, if we have a permit requirement for any of those kinds.
I think that when we try to fix what's currently going on, we add something about, you know, no more than one fundraiser a year or something like, yeah, I think you could even limit the amount of not-for-profit fundraisers.
Do you know what, I think before we can even go there, we have to fix this.
What are you pointing at?
I'm sorry, I'm just pointing at, how many papers which includes all of the evidence from Airbnb of how many events go on there, the seventy-one events per year? If we can't figure out how to stop it.
Just the sheer fact you have people coming into the house, the, the neighbor's house, like, where's the party, I think? I mean, we're lucky we didn't have some, you know, span, inventory, some kind of situation.
I think we have to fix this first.
Yeah. I think. But I would like, I mean, the landmark law, you and I require changes in the law.
Are there? At least, the law just said museum, museum use, right? I'm sorry, I'm maybe I'm trying myself, yes, I thought the law that, um, said museum use.
That's just, oh, you mean the land, no, the landmark law didn't connect to the possible things it could connect to.
Yeah, but it doesn't, that's.
It doesn't necessarily connect to anything, but it could connect to different things. So, I guess the, I, I, I understand and I feel very badly that we've had this bad actor in this historic house, and it has created a very negative overlay, um, right? But I guess the, so Mark, you were.
I'm sorry, I just gave me time to feedback, I'm sorry.
Because I was just asking, is it more than just the Lombardo, the, the octagon house and Dolan house that are, that are coming to the village saying, hey, we can't make it without residential.
Right, right, so, right, so there, there are ones that, that we know, we got a letter from Mr. Lombardi saying, you know, it would be helpful to him to have this law. I mean, he was, I could find the letter again, it was very positive. There is some communication and, but nothing direct to us, though our committee met once with Mrs. Dolee, and I, there's no letter from her, so I don't, or from him, so I don't know exactly, but I'm, I'm.
I don't think that was, I don't think this was discussed.
Yeah, no, that, that one, right. She got the notes to, what?
Who's that?
She's the Dolees.
CJ Walker.
CJ Walker.
Oh, oh, sorry.
And we haven't had any communication from the Odell Tavern, that's Matamido, which is not protected in any way. We don't know the, we don't know the Odell Tavern or the Wendell Mansion, I guess you could call it, or other places around town that do have historic significance. We did get the communication from the, the survey, that a lot of people in town felt that in general, trying to protect historic properties was something that the village supported. I think it was eighty percent, that they wouldn't, they'd like to not see large historic properties have to either be, you know, so divided or whatever.
Not in my backyard.
Yeah, right, so I'm just saying, right, so.
And they hadn't had the opportunity to read all the, you know, or something.
Right.
I, I wouldn't even do it in your backyard.
Right, so, or, or rich, right, so I'm, I'm just doing that, but then, then there was the working groups that, that we had eight, I don't know, seven or eight people in that, that group who talked about this extensively, who, you know, that report came out and we just discussed the working group's report that this was something that we should consider, that they supported. So, so the question is to me now, how do you, how do you judge this, this whole idea separate from the bad experience that we've had with one particular place? That's obviously coloring the whole thing.
But you can, because.
Well, let me just finish, Mark, just, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, the, the point about, do we have to solve, to solve it, the, the bad actor issue first, or is it, and I understand you could make that argument, if you can't enforce this, then why should we do this? On the other hand, I, I think, Brian, you were kind of alluding to how hard it is to prosecute that kind of law. You can give a fine for, for noise, right? Two hundred and fifty dollar fine, maybe that's, you know, not gonna shut down if you're gonna make a quarter of a million dollars in a few months. So, the prosecution of the current situation is hard to do. Is it easier to enforce and, and punish the bad actors with this kind of specific registration, regulation, you're out if you do this? It seems to me it's easier to shut it down with this than without it. So, I'm not ready to abandon it, but it would feel terrible that the situation, you know, has developed as it has. And I think there's a lot of input, that a lot of people said, hey, we should, we should try this, we should try not just the two or three places that would financially benefit, but the whole village benefiting from the idea, we're a historic village and we wanna keep it as a historic village, and this is a technique to do that.
You heard a second thing, which is basically, we're a bedroom community and we wanna keep it that way.
Well.
And that's a strong argument, no one wants commercialization of their neighborhoods.
So, so the same thing is true with the, that Pat made with the Airbnb, and, you know.
Well, it's a little different, there's, if, if, you know, it could be argued, but with all due respect to your particular feelings, what we're talking about with the Airbnb is, what we're envisioning, I think, is there are still six people in a three-bedroom house and they're staying for a short period of time and they're going to be living there, and it's not gonna change the character of your block. The Georgia license plates in and of themselves are not, you know, don't disrupt.
Florida.
Florida, do not disrupt the lifestyle of your block or of the village. But here we have such a flagrant, consistent, and ongoing violation of our current zoning that I, I'm not sure we can go, until we figure out how we're gonna fix this.
We also talked about the, the Airbnb people supporting what goes on in the village, whereas the other people are in and they're out.
The only people, the only person profits is the owner of the house. The Airbnb people are gonna go to our restaurants, they're gonna go to our stores.
Theoretically, hopefully, yes, but.
Yeah, so if there weren't parties, but this whole thing were set up, if you couldn't have that kind of event, would that change?
Well, what event could you have?
Well, if we took weddings out and had.
Yeah, the weddings.
Fundraisers and lectures.
You're, we already said, you're okay with that.
No, fundraisers are issues.
I know, I'm just, I'm.
You have big ball fundraisers, I mean, they're, I mean, if it's commercial, if it's anything commercial, it's not permitted now without something like this. So, a fundraiser for something that, you know, if you, if you make something, it's commercial.
For a nonprofit.
Right, so.
But that doesn't solve the problem of trying to give these folks a financial incentive. If you're, if you could do it for a nonprofit group, there's no financial benefit to the owner of the house, because we're trying to benefit by allowing them to have events.
He's probably not charging a lot of money.
Right.
But, but you know what else, you know what else I wanna say, kind of, you were going through this example, people find ways of dealing with it or not. The CJ Walker house was making money by doing something that wasn't allowed, and they were stopped from doing it, and they found other ways to survive, and they're still there.
Right, that's great.
And I think the museum piece is, is.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I think they need way more money on film rights.
And, and there is something to be said for.
Have anything against.
The market.
Yeah.
Mark, you.
Unfortunately, I don't think we can ignore the bad actor, it's so egregious and ongoing and such an assault on the neighborhood that it.
I guess, I guess I'm thinking you could shut down the bad actor better by this kind of regulation than just going through the prosecutorial system that we're kind of stuck.
End you up in court, there's no question on that, if you let everybody else do it, and not that.
Right, so.
But there's no way to do that, but you can limit what's acceptable, what, you know, what events, types of events, I mean, that, again, we keep talking about.
It was the letter you read.
What's acceptable, but it, there isn't. And of that.
Well, do you want to, okay, back, back to that letter you read, you know, he said, you know, let's look at two sides of this, that was Mr. Ritter, I think, and I, and I thought, Bruce, you wrote a thing about.
Well, I wrote, I wrote something.
A way to.
Along the lines of what you were saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Which, which said that at the moment, we have a problem.
Yeah. Well, do you want to, okay, back, back to that letter you read, you know, he said, you know, let's look at two sides of this. That was Mr. Ritter, I think. And I, and I thought, Bruce, you wrote a thing about.
Well, I wrote, I wrote something.
A way to.
Along the lines of what you were saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Which, which said that at the moment, we have a problem.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, the village is not dealing with it. If we're going to have a regulation in place that attempts to deal with it, and if it's going to be enforced, then that may be the best way to stamp this out, or at least limit it to the few situations where it would be acceptable. But I, you know, again, that's before, that's sort of Pollyannaish maybe, and just before we knew the extent to which this was being abused, incredibly. I just think, I mean, I'm willing to listen obviously, that we have an obvious abuse going on in institutionalizing this kind of abuse, the circumstances seems to me to be a policy mistake. And as I, I just, I understand what you're saying, but after all the evidence, it's what's really happening there, how often, I think putting something like this in place, unless we've got a certifiable way to enforce it, I just am not sure that's a whole. And how do we enforce all the other, it's not just noise, right? Because it's the, it's the unknown faces trespassing issue, it's the parking issue, it's like, and potentially the garbage and trash issue in, in the neighborhood after the fact. So how is any of that enforced if, you know, with business as usual? Do you know what I'm saying? I'm not even sure. We have to address, make sure that our code addresses those issues right now. I, I mean, I, I think we're talking about the comprehensive plan and the update, and having, having something in saying that the village supports this kind of activity, and I don't mean excessive activity, I mean events, in general, seems to me unnecessary. I don't see the reason for doing that. If we, you come up with a way to enforce existing restrictions and add restrictions so that what's going on at a Clifton place is eliminated, then maybe once you've done that, then you can move on to some sort of regulatory system that might work. But I, I just, it just, it seems to me it sends the wrong message. If we know there's an abuse, to put something in that says, we're going to, we're going to print something like.
I also don't feel like we've heard from a lot of homeowners that say, you know, I really have to sub, you know, I have to sublet my historic home, except if you let me rent it out, except one time for the next three months.
It's actually just the law.
Yeah, it's, you know, I think Mr. Lombardi said it'd be nice to be helpful. I think it's similar with Villaloo, and I, I don't, I mean, Villaloo. So I don't, I don't think that there's a lot, I mean, I understand the original purpose and the taxes on these homes are ridiculous, and the upkeep allowance is ridiculous, I, I understand all of that, but I don't think that this is the solution that's the key to doing it. So I, that's why I don't think we have to take that risk of putting it in here and saying, you know, although we know something bad is going on, in general, we support it, I think we can just almost be moved on the whole point and, you know, fix our current laws. And then if people raise their hand and say, hey, this would be really helpful, maybe then we entertain it again, other than the one person that is kind of rooted for everybody, you know, maybe we entertain it again, it just not, it's not in the comprehensive plan. That's.
Well, I, I, I understand that, so.
And, and Connie, for me, I think it was loud and clear, and I, I don't think anybody's disagreeing, that we support the notion of preservation of historic residences and properties in the village. That that is, was clearly a very firm outcome from your group and that the whole committee egregious. The problem is, because of the nature of this abuse by one, one bad actor, as you've said, I'm not sure that we can open the door, pardon upon, to this other events without, until we figure out how to do, it, it's not that we might reconsider it down the line, but this is, I think, the opt, the optics would be terrible.
Are there any other ways, other than allowing commercial uses in these historic facilities, to reduce the burden on some of these historic facilities that would be less of an impact on the community?
Well, that's what we were talking, it's related to the historic nature of the buildings, a tour of the historic house.
But you would charge that, it would be commercial.
There were also, well, I don't know, I don't know if it's permitted legal, whatever. I mean, you know, back in the eighties, there were investment tax credits given for rehabbing historic facilities, historic buildings. We did that, my company that worked for them, we did that. We took factories, we converted that, we converted them from factories into condominiums, but we got tax credits for doing it.
We could do that, then we have, we have models of those.
You do that.
We've been looking at them over the historic district.
Other way of keeping the building historic without allowing these non-residential uses of the building?
There are some incentives, yes. There are some incentives that you could put into place, and the Historic District Committee, you know, had been considering different incentives, but this was, you know, this is, this is a, this is a piece of incentives.
But it's also conceivable, I mean, once we allow the, um, the combination museum house, then it may.
It work.
It could work for, for those, for those properties.
I don't see a tour to, it being necessarily commercial. I know you could charge money, it could be an open house and a tour.
Yeah, but if it, if it's, I mean, if you get declared a museum, maybe you give tours.
But a tour includes champagne canapes and band.
Houses in Savannah and stuff. Oh, yeah, so you're lost it.
Well, that's what Lombardi was talking about.
It is commercial if you, it is, it is commercial if you charge for your tour and you have a gift shop and you sell it.
Yeah, but Connie, you, you don't have to define it in terms of commercial, no, we're talking about you can have museum houses.
And within that, you can do that.
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Yeah, because they charge you to go into the Metropolitan Museum now if you come out of town.
If you're in a residential.
Yeah, but, 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 but that doesn't mean they're commercial. I mean, so, so I, I don't know, I think permitting the museum house thing, because you won't be talking about a few of the properties, might help them out, I'm sure it would help Lombardi, and he's, he's in that business, he's got one in France.
Right, and he has tours and.
But then we have to, do we have to outline what is an acceptable museum practice?
Well, we are going to, yeah, we're not just going to say you can use it for museums, we're going to have.
Having a wedding is, or, I mean, having a wedding at the Met, wouldn't that be fantastic?
Well, people do.
You can have one at a zoo, you can have one at the Met.
Yeah, I mean.
I've been to a wedding at the Met, so I think we have to.
We'll have to.
Yeah.
Really?
And there are performances at the Met, and there are all kinds of for-profit activities at the Met.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I'm, I was saying, these are, these would be museums in residential districts, and I just want to clarify that some of their activity is commercial, money comes in.
But we, yeah, but we, we did all sort of agree on that, that, that.
Maybe one way to approach this, we've agreed that there's maybe a half dozen properties that we're talking about here.
Well, no, because there can be more. We, we have this local landmark law, and there are actually two more on the county list in Irvington that are not national or state.
Well, then that's probably a total of six.
So, but the local law, as we, as Larry mentioned, that we just passed, said that you could nominate, you yourself could nominate your property, or someone could, and you could agree, that this had historic significance, and then you would become a local landmark, and then you would fit into this category. So it's way more than six.
Yeah, could, could be.
Good, yes.
Be reviewed by the district.
Yes, exactly. In addition to which, Bruce, a museum, a museum use would be.
Not happening.
A museum use would be a special permit use. It already is, there's no standards laid out, but it would be a special permit use.
But it, what I was going to suggest, it seems like there's a relatively, it might not be six, but there's a relatively small number of properties, and perhaps this should be a discussion with, invitation to a discussion by these folks. What, what do you foresee? How would, what could help? What, you know, I would suspect that some of them would say, I don't want a wedding at my, in my home, you know? Let's see if there's reasonable consensus.
Well, we did talk to Joe Lombardi, yes, at that meeting, and that's, that's sort of where the museum house, thank you, Mom.
So, so in a way, we are, I, I, I understand the optics, and I feel as badly as everybody else does about the, the bad actor and the neighbors and all that's happened, I just don't know that it's the most effective thing to just try to shut that down by the means we have now. There, we've been struggling with that, and I think there's been goodwill in trying to do it, but it hasn't been effective. I thought this would be more effective to shut down it.
Well, why can't we, with the, with the information that's on Airbnb, why can't we say, this is clearly a violation of the current village zoning, we are putting you on notice that no further events will be permitted to occur on your, in your residence?
No, it's not that easy, apparently, so, I mean, it's not something we should discuss, I guess, but.
But then what happens if there are events, then they have to be reported by the neighbors, and then what happens? I mean, it's one thing to say you can't do it anymore, it's another thing.
Well, the police have to be called, you got to go out there and get some.
But then you've got to make a case about it.
Right, yeah, sure.
Well, and that's what you're going to have to do, is it? You have to make a case, and this may end up being some sort of test case. I can see this getting to be a test case at some point.
That's.
But you can't just, you know, if you're going to call a protest, complaining about noise, that's different thing, but, but, but doesn't the very fact of what is being advertised violate our current zoning?
I don't know.
I would think, only think, advertising a commercial use in a residential neighborhood.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I think it does.
I think, so if you're advertising a use that violates our code as it exists, don't we have the means to send a notice to this person saying, based on this, you're in violation of the code, you have indicated there are, you have booked it for this date, this date, this date, and this date, be advised, we're going to be there, this date, this date, this date, and this date, and then what happens?
I think, I think we all agree that that's what we want to do, and that's what we're going to do going forward, and we'll follow up, whether it's the building department, whether it's the police department, we're going to figure it out and we're going to shut it down. And that's, that's the, that's the.
Because what's going to hurt is not a 250 dollar fine, what's going to hurt is not allowing the event to happen.
Yeah, when the gators get there to set up and you say, no, back in the truck there, boss, that's going to hurt.
But you have to have a straight order for that.
I don't know, then we have to figure out the mechanism, then we have to write a new law, we'll write a new law, make it easier.
So, okay, so should we, we, can you just finish this meeting, what I guess a couple of the other things?
Can we vote on that?
No, I think that's pretty clear. I would rather leave it, but, and I think for the reasons I've stated, but I think I'm in minority opinion, so.
Okay, I'll, let me just list the other things that came up, up in the things today, and if anybody wants to revisit it, say someone in Rice will just, okay. One, somebody didn't like the idea about the bridge over the railroad tracks.
The second bridge over.
But somebody else did.
The third.
Yeah, okay, no, no, but does anybody want to open, nobody wants to revisit that? Okay.
Which one's there?
There was, somebody raised about one lane, one lane on Broadway, but there was never a recommendation of the comprehensive plan, nor was the, the parking from A to R, those were recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
But, what else?
This is the.
This is the letter, they can't, they can't.
Yeah, I understand, but one thing on Broadway, I think, was talked about in terms of potential for.
Not the comprehensive plan, somebody raised at the meeting.
That was a rumor, we talked, it was a plan about, we didn't mention the.
Talked about improvements, I think it was more generic.
No.
At the public meetings, Mary said, the public meetings, that woman got, who was representing the guy who had sent us the letter, the engineer had sent us the letter saying, we should convert.
We should do one.
Right, 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 but that's not in the comprehensive plan.
Before we go on, we talked about, I think, when we talked about it, we talked about the sense that, that it's, because of, not whether it's, how capital is, because it's not actually our control, and we can ask the state entity to do it, but.
And we study it.
Or study it, and there's a study going on right now about traffic coming and bike lanes up and down the corridor.
We may have talked about it, Mark, but it's not the comprehensive plan.
Being in any form.
What?
No, you make, you, you essentially cross-referenced with the current study that's going on, you didn't say it in those terms.
Right, that's what the comprehensive plan says, that we'll, we'll.
We should continue to cooperate with other river towns.
That's what it says that.
Yeah.
We, we shouldn't say specifically that we recommend one lane.
No, no, but, but if that, if that study results in the recommendation of one lane, that's, that's a whole different conversation.
Get out there in the morning and see what's going on.
All right, somebody came in opposed, the one person came in, that this, this selfish thing, where it's supposed to be saying, I'm saying, nobody wants to be open there.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The beach, oh, yeah, no, we like the beach, okay. But the beach was opposed to bike racks.
Let us vote.
Anybody want to take up the bike rack recommendation?
No, we like the bike racks.
No, it's, wasn't it?
Bike lanes, no bike lanes, just sidewalks.
Bike lanes, no.
Bike racks, I think, were in the county, were in the county limits.
Well, referred to, but I don't.
It was something else. But I thought the bike lanes.
Yeah, look, the San Francisco, there's something in the county right now.
Look at that, his lane.
Oh, yeah, it's hard to read, yeah. Yeah.
I looked at it quickly and saw.
Well, that's not in our recommendation anyway, okay? Don't increase the alcohol establishment.
Yeah, and she, she, when she dropped this off, asked me about that, and I said, I think maybe you're talking about the breweries or the whatever that was. She wasn't even talking about that.
That's the only recommendation we have about it.
Yeah, and, and, no, yeah, that's essentially, she would have been objecting to if you were proposing it.
And then the one, then on another issue that was raised, a letter came in from Mr. Felton, he's opposed to development of DPW site, and he was opposed to the Esther Street parking proposal. Anybody want to read this?
It's important for somebody. It could be in his league as well.
What?
Just pass it through. Just want to. Five would be. So it's got Florida plates.
And then he's.
He's not talking about. He's parked in the wrong side.
He said something about Esther Street, but, I think, I think that's it.
I got my plate from my Georgia car, and they're Georgia plates, so I have.
Don't even, don't even think of parking on Main Street.
It won't be in the yard, ever.
You want to quickly say something? Sure. I just wanted to introduce myself quickly, I'm Kristen Wilson, Blantren Wilson, recently retained by Apoa. I commend your board for deliberating, it's a tough process. I sympathize with you, I happen to represent the city of Ryan, we're going through the exact same thing right now. So, one question and a couple thoughts that I wanted to leave you with. One is, I noticed, I think, on the website that the written comment period perhaps is closing tomorrow. Is there any way, having heard your thoughts tonight, that we can leave that open a couple more days? I would like, if you say no, you say no, there's still the secret process to go through, but having heard just tonight what some of your thoughts were and some of the questions, I think we can, I, we can provide some suggestions, some thoughts to you. One thing that I heard a couple trustees mentioned tonight that Riots had success with is the Ethica law, which is the historic, it's called the Ethica law, I guess, it's a start enough in the city of Ethica, but the historic tax credit. We do have that on the books in Ryan, happy to provide that information to show you the sliding scale.
Yes, we're actually, this comes even separate from our comprehensive plan, because we just passed a new historic district, a new historic landmark law. And then we're going to give, we basically created the process to create the local landmark, now we want to create benefits for it, so it's not, actually, it doesn't have to necessarily be inside the comprehensive plan, so we'd love to get a copy of the.
Happy to, to help.
Yeah, I think we have.
But there are a couple other things, certainly with respect to the enforcement of what's existing now, that was very helpful to hear, how some of you felt about the, my opinion, the flagrant violations of not just your zoning code, but I doubt the C of O is even close to permitting what is going on there, and there are certainly a lot of fire and safety issues too, that the village should be concerned about, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we take the, they give a class on the comprehensive plan, you know, because I think it's not a part of the, it's a separate issue.
Sure, but, and then with respect to the Airbnb and the use of historic properties, I think some types of regulations with respect to maybe limiting Airbnbs to non-single-family home residential districts, or limiting where they can be permitted, would be helpful in preserving the bedroom-type communities in the residential districts. Certainly, the number of weeks or days a year is certain, is something that a lot of municipalities have, have looked to and adopted. And with respect to large events being hosted at historical homes, I don't know if there's been a proven need for it, based on what the discussion has been, what the survey results have been, other than the octagon house perhaps saying it would be a nice to have, but maybe those nice to haves are by special permit by the, by the Board of Trustees on a one-off, not, you know, a fundraiser type event once a year, but not something that's specifically permitted by a special permit. So those types of ideas, we would like to maybe drill down a little bit more and, and provide you written comments on.
You can, but, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, I personally think that for the actual comprehensive plan, I mean, a lot of it's going to come, comprehensive plan's obviously step one, next is creating the dashboard laws, you know, so I think that there's plenty of time for that, if you want to get to it now, that's great also, but, you know, I think the comprehensive plan itself, I think, I think most of those things were addressed or they're outside of the plan, so I don't think we need to keep it open longer, myself personally, but still would love to, we most certainly consider it as we take the next step out of the comprehensive plan.
Sure, so, just, so you're going to close the public comment period, written period, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, on the comprehensive plan, so, but then there's going to be, there's still, I mean, this is kind of what, second inning of anything coming, because it's, you know, obviously, yeah, without, with, with just this, it doesn't do anything, you need the actual laws, so I think a lot of the specifics you're talking about will be helpful when we consider the actual laws that would kind of enact the comprehensive plan.
So write the letter, but it doesn't have to be by tomorrow.
Right, you can write anything, we, we're happy to have the sign.
Ideas, whenever.
Ideas, they're great, you know, fine.
So do you have, is there a, a general timeframe at all for the next steps, or is that still pretty much a moving target right now?
I'm trying to adopt this plan by the beginning of June.
Yeah, so this, the plan is out by June, and then after that, we're going to have to prioritize what we think are kind of, I'm going to guess, low-hanging fruit, as well as important things, and try to get those done first. So, you know, the next two years will probably be spent enacting the plan, you know, putting[1765.72] So, you know, the next two years will probably be spent enacting the plan, you know, putting it into the legislation to support the, the recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
Sure, okay.
So, there's time, and plenty of meetings for you.
Plenty of, plenty of comments.
Exactly, but we, I don't, I don't want to dissuade you from sending in your, your thoughts, because I think a lot of it is, is determined to the next steps, even if those are, you know, not going to be out in the next couple of weeks.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Sure. Are we done with the handwritten one?
Yeah, we're done. Anything new that came up while the comments have been addressed?
I, I will say, I appreciate everyone reaching out, I think, and Larry and I, for months, talked about how we were so worried that no one was, that no one was getting back to us, anything. And then Larry started sending out his, his newsletters and scared people, and then, you know, we already got rid of the firehouse, and there's all these things, I don't know how people came up with some of these conclusions, but at least it got people writing letters.
Just make a general comment, we heard from a couple of people in these comments that the questionnaires that we sent out were hard and scientific, and they weren't, and they were never intended to be, it was not an attempt to poll the entire community, this was a way to allow people who wanted to opine to do it in an easy way without crafting an actual letter.